Okay, you're live.
Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. This meeting will be rebroadcast on channel twenty-nine until our next regularly scheduled meeting on November twenty-eighth. It is also going to be available for viewing on SMC's website. The first item on our agenda is public participation. This is the first item on our agenda at each regularly scheduled school committee meeting. Public participation provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the committee. Tonight, no one has expressed interest in doing so. Those wishing to do so in the future should contact the chairperson in advance of the meeting, and you'll be recognized for up to three minutes. The next item on our agenda is chairpersons' and members' reports, and I am going to kick it off with a message on behalf of the committee. Last week, and in fact, in the weeks leading up to it during the early voting period, Shrewsbury residents went to the polls to cast votes on the debt exclusion question to fund the town's portion of the construction of a new Beal K-4 elementary school. Just about sixty-eight percent of voters, almost eleven thousand Shrewsbury residents, voted in favor of the project, which passed. On behalf of the school committee, I'd like to extend our sincere thanks to the community for authorizing this funding. We're confident that this project will have a substantial educational benefit to all K-4 students in Shrewsbury for generations to come, and we will certainly be doing our part to make that a reality. We're humbled by the overwhelming margin by which the yes side of that question won, and we are deeply appreciative of the support that the community has shown to its public schools. I also want to extend thanks in particular to the organizers and leaders of the community supporters for Beal campaign, who had been working for months to organize and advocate on behalf of a yes vote, specifically my co-chairperson of that campaign, Selectman Beth Cassavant, the campaign manager, Jason Molina, organizational leaders Suzanne Remington, Kelly Barner, and Erin Ryan. Strategic guidance was also received from our own Mrs. Fritz, as well as Selectman Jim Kane and Representative Hannah Kane, and the dozens of other volunteers who lent their time and treasure to the cause. Every person I just mentioned was a volunteer and gave willingly of their time, and I also want to extend our thanks to the Molina, Cassavant, and Remington households, who were significantly disrupted by campaign activity over the past few months, and so we're certainly appreciative of that. I'd like to thank the staff of Shrewsbury Public Schools, in particular, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent for business services, Mr. Collins, as well as the building committee for their work in developing a stellar project that's going to be a sound investment for the community. Certainly, the success of the campaign depended on a project that was going to meet the community's needs for a long time to come, and I know that I speak for all of us on the committee when I express that we do not take last week's results for granted. We recognize and appreciate everyone who puts some time into this effort, and we are heartened to know that the community has the best interest of our students in mind. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Fritz, who is our representative on the building committee for some more.
I too wanted to thank the voters of the town of Shrewsbury. I think this was a project that was vital and needed to move forward, and we were very lucky to have that positive vote. But you're a little humble in the amount of time and effort you personally put in along with the rest of the community supporters for Beal. There was a ton of work done behind the scenes, and Jason, you kept us on task, and we made sure we were doing what we were supposed to, and I think that helped. We had probably the least amount of funding and the least amount of volunteers in the project in a long time, and it was a very successful campaign with those poor people. So, thank you to the town, and thank you to Jason for really leading that, and it was a lot of work, so thank you very much.
Further comments from the committee? Anything else under members' reports? With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer for the next item on our agenda, which is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Mr. Palich. Please allow me to extend my thanks as well to the community for their overwhelming support of the Beal project. This is very exciting to be able to embark upon building a much-needed K-4 elementary school. It will be an excellent project. I took the margin as a vote of confidence in our community itself. There's been lots of people over the last couple of decades when I've been in Shrewsbury who have worked really hard to make sure that all of our building projects, going back to Floral Street School in nineteen ninety-seven, the high school, the Oak Middle School renovation, the New Sherwood Middle School, the preschool project, they've all been done well. They've all represented excellent values to the community, and I think that the community has a comfort level knowing that when a project is brought forth by a building committee supported by the Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and of course, the school committee, that residents realize that that is something that they can believe is needed and is a good investment. We will do our best to make sure the project moves forward successfully, and we'll look forward to hopefully cutting ribbon and opening a brand-new school in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one as a result of this opportunity that the community is providing, and of course, with the participation and support of the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Certainly also want to thank the community supporters for Beal, the work that everyone you mentioned has done to really push this forward and make sure people in the community were aware, and also do want to thank our architects, our project manager, the building committee, but especially the folks here. You, as a school committee, were able to articulate very well the need for the school, made, I thought, an excellent decision in terms of determining the grade configuration as a K-4 building, and I think really made the case to the community for its need. The team that I'm able to work with, including Mr. Collins, Mrs. Clowder, Mrs. Belcedo, Mr. Girardi, who primarily put together the educational plan, which, again, the Massachusetts School Building Authority said it's essentially the best educational plan they've seen submitted in some time, and that's really what drives the design and the value of the building. So, they've done excellent work, and we'll look forward to continuing that work in the next few years to make sure it's a successful building project. So, as superintendent, I'm thrilled and very humbled and thankful, grateful for the opportunity that we have to provide a better learning environment for our kids for the long term. So, thank you. The only other item I'll mention this evening is I wanted to thank all of the community members, parents who came out last evening for the event that was put on by the Shrewsbury Coalition for Addiction Prevention and Education, known as Escape, as well as Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. It was titled "Middle Schoolers at Risk: What Every Family Needs to Know." There was an excellent panel of presenters with expertise on everything from substance abuse to social media to vaping, in terms of looking at some of the statistics from our health surveys, mental health, and although the information was sobering, and obviously, there's a level of concern that we have, as we presented recently to the school committee relative to some issues with students' mental and health and social and emotional well-being, I thought it was an excellent conversation. I thought parents asked great questions, and it's one of many things that we're going to need to do in the coming months and years to help improve the kinds of supports we provide and build a positive culture where we're meeting students' social and emotional and mental health needs. I want to thank Representative Kane for emceeing the event, and again, everyone who participated, and particularly also thanking Noel Freeman, our director of school nursing, who played a key role behind the scenes as well, and we'll look forward to continuing this conversation with the community. As you know, this is a really important part of our strategic plan, and although we're going to discuss a lot of great things tonight at our meeting, everything from our athletic program to our academic testing results, we know that the health and safety and well-being of our students is paramount, and that was, I thought, an excellent way to have a good community conversation, because it is going to take the entire community to help improve the situation for our kids, and that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, and the next item on our agenda is a Beal building project update. Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins will provide an update on the Beal Early Childhood Center building project in the wake of last week's vote. So, sticking with the theme for the evening, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins.
Thank you for the opportunity, and we thought it was appropriate, given the recent vote, to provide an update and signal to the community what the next steps are now that we have the opportunity to move forward. You can see the slide on the screen right now is the rendering of what the new Beal school will look like when it is sited on what's known now as the current Glavin Center, with the existing buildings having been demolished and building this seven-hundred-and-ninety-student K-4 elementary school, which will hopefully open in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, just above the soccer fields there on Lake Street. This is an excellent site for a school, and I do want to again thank everyone who was involved with the opportunity to, if the funding was provided, which it was, to procure this state-owned site for use of the school, as well as the soccer and the agriculture across the street. It is an excellent location for a school. I think it's going to serve us well in that capacity. And again, as I just stated a few moments ago, we're so grateful for the support of the community, and at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Collins to give some information about what the next steps are and how we'll proceed from this point.
Okay, and just recapping quickly, the strong community support and MSBA support as well. You can see here that back in December of two thousand and sixteen, town meeting appropriated one-point-two-million dollars, and that was by unanimous vote in order to conduct a feasibility study. So, that's just about two years ago, and so, back then, there was strong support. Recently, the town meeting almost unanimously approved the project, the ninety-two-million-dollar borrowing, and then, of course, the vote that was just recapped here by the town election, and also that we did have unanimous support from the MSBA Board of Directors. So, we go into this with a lot of strong, positive support and feelings. This chart you've seen many times. This is a kind of a very simplified version of how to build a public school building in Massachusetts with MSBA in eight phases, and you can see that we completed their, called modules. We just finished funding the project, module five, with the most recent election, and so now we move quickly into detailed design. That's module six, and then after that is construction and then closing out the project. So, just a few more pieces of information about what is next as we move into module six, detailed design, and you can see here that it's really more about continued planning and development of the construction documents, and so there's lots of work with our architectural firm, our project management firm, and soon-to-be our construction manager-at-risk company as well. And so, by February, the next milestone is, in submittal due to the MSBA, is sixty percent completion of construction documents, and each one of these milestones also has independent third-party cost estimates provided as well, and so we're always checking against our budget that we have and needing, if we need to make adjustments along the way, to stay within budget. Same thing happens as we advance from sixty percent to ninety percent completion of construction documents by next July of two thousand and nineteen, and then in the fall, we'll conduct procurement and bidding, and then construction starts in November of two thousand and nineteen, just about twelve months from now. Some of that could be, of course, in addition to the demolition of the existing buildings on the Glavin site, potentially the realignment of Lake Street, could be some early work that gets done prior to the September, October timeframe. So, that's still yet to be determined, but those two pieces are things that could be happening sooner than next fall. The task of the building committee, the near-term task, is to hire a construction manager-at-risk firm. There was a subcommittee formed to go through all those statements of qualifications. That subcommittee included myself, Aaron Boucher, Bob Cox, and John Masiello, of course, all from the building committee, along with our project management firm and the architect. So, we poured through, actually in this room, all eight submittals, and we had them in advance, of course, and narrowed that list of eight submittals down to three companies, which are Gilbane, Fontaine Brothers, and Shawmet Construction. So, those are the three companies that have been shortlisted, and then in early December, we'll be conducting interviews and then making our final recommendation for one of those three companies to be secured by vote of the entire building committee on December eleventh. So, we'll have the company on in early December. It's also probably just important to note that the building committee did meet last night, and one of the things that also has to be done once you're done with your feasibility study and have secured funding is you have to do either go out and hire a new architect to complete the project for you, or a new project management company if you're not happy with the one that you've had up to this particular point. Very happy, of course, and so, contract amendments were extended to and voted by the building committee for both PMA and the Amaro Pagano Associates. So, that is what's happening at the building committee level, and I'll turn it back to Dr. Sawyer for a couple more pieces of information on Beal.
Sure. Many people, of course, have asked what the plan is for the Beal site once we move students to the new school, and we had a conversation as a school committee last year upon an inquiry from Mr. DiPaolo from the Board of Selectmen, who is chairing the Beal Reuse Study Committee, and although the committee can't commit to a future action, which would happen, or the committee's constituted, at such time that we're no longer going to use it as a school, the indication was given that the school department does not have plans to use the facility in any way once we're able to vacate it. That certainly is my recommendation, and I know there's a very significant effort going on right now, looking at strategic planning about the town center, and obviously, the use of that building will be part of that strategic planning and thinking, and ultimately, when the time comes and we move into the new facility in two thousand and twenty-one and the building is vacated, at that time, my expectation is that I would recommend, and the school committee at that time, would vote to turn the building back to the town, and then the town would make decisions about what would happen to it going forward based on the work of the Reuse Study Committee. In terms of, you know, they're evaluating potential reuses, as I stated, and the idea, of course, it could be that, quote-unquote, disposal, which could mean the sale or lease options of it by private owners. So, that's one decision the town will have to make ultimately in terms of reuse by the town or to sell it. These are not, of course, under the authority of the school committee or the school department, and the building would remain as long as it's used as a school, and it's under the control of the school committee, but at such time that you formally turn it back, then that becomes the responsibility of the town. And there's contact information. These slides will be up on our website if anyone's interested in contacting Mr. DiPaolo with any suggestions or ideas about that. And then really, the last part that I wanted to mention, based on some questions we received, is some people have asked whether there would be any name change to the school, and my strong recommendation is that the community continue to honor Major Howard W. Beal, after whom the current school is named, and that that name travel with to the new building, and that that building be named the Major Howard W. Beal School. Currently, that's the Beal Early Childhood Center, of course, because of the model we have in place. But for those who aren't familiar, Major Beal was a Shrewsbury resident, and during the early part of the twentieth century, he was a surgeon at Memorial Hospital in Worcester. He was educated at Harvard Medical School, and during the early part of World War I, prior to the United States entering the conflict, he actually served in the Red Cross in England, ran a hospital there, became, my understanding is he became ill, came back to the United States to recover, and then when the United States entered the war, he enlisted in the United States Army Medical Corps, again, was running a hospital this time in France when he was tragically killed after being wounded at action in July of nineteen eighteen. And given his standing and his, what he was, the outstanding work that he did, and then ultimately, the sacrifice that he made, we think it's appropriate to maintain the name of the school. If you move forward one slide, you actually have quite a good portrait that's from his, some materials from, he went to Andover, Phillips Andover, for his education prior to Harvard, and it's an excellent portrait of him, and we did have a conversation last night at the building committee meeting with the architect, Katie Crockett, about the opportunity to create some sort of place in the new school where the history of Major Beal and others who are connected to the World War I effort may be memorialized appropriately in an educational way. Those who are familiar with the public library know when you walk in, there's some historical pieces there. We can think about that. And the chair of the building committee, Mr. Kane, actually charged Mr. Girardi, the principal, Mr. Cox from Public Buildings, to work with local town historian, Mr. Perna, Michael Perna, to do essentially an inventory of anything that's part of the current building that we may want to bring with us to the school. There's a relief on the right-hand side when you enter the building that is of significance that we want to find some way to bring with us. And then beyond the historical piece with Major Beal, those who are familiar with Beal School know that there's actually quite an excellent mural on the second floor that was painted at one point, a number of years ago, by the children's artist, Peter Reynolds, who since has become quite famous, and it captures the spirit of the Beal School, and there are maybe some ways, technology-wise, to capture that mural and replicate it in the new school. So, those are all things that the architect will be working on in order to, because these are more than bricks and mortar, of course. There's a culture and a spirit to every one of our schools, and we want to make sure we're preserving much of what makes Beal special as we grow into a new building in a different part of town. And that is the report that we have this evening, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee has.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins. Committee members, questions or comments? And we have none. Thank you both.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the acceptance of gifts related to the SHS Athletic Turf Fields Project pursuant to school committee policy nine-eleven. Gifts of five-thousand dollars or more must be formally accepted by the committee. Also, in accordance with school committee policy nine-one-two, sponsorship and advertising in amounts greater than five-thousand dollars must also be approved by the school committee. We will hear an update from Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins regarding a ten-thousand-dollar donation, as well as a thirty-five-thousand-dollar sponsorship agreement, and pursuant to those policies, both items will require action by the committee. So, Dr. Sawyer, if you'll introduce our guests and tell us about the gifts.
I'm sure, and I'll introduce you Kathleen DeVito and Matt Armenti, who are from Unibank, and we'll be talking in a moment about the partnership that we're building with them. Prior to that, there is a gift of ten-thousand dollars from the Galley family. I don't know if there's anything else, Mr. Collins. It's just a straightforward donation, and we've been very pleased with the level of support. As we came to the part of the project where we had the green light, and we were going to go ahead and build, I think there really was a lot of momentum that resulted in a lot of folks wanting to get on board and help support this project, and we appreciate certainly that offer of ten-thousand dollars from the Galley family. We've also been working with Unibank on building a sponsorship partnership to go with the facility, and what I'll do is, at this point, turn it over to Mr. Collins, give you a little more information and detail about that, and then offer the opportunity for Ms. DeVito and Mr. Armenti to make some comments as well.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. First, the Galley contribution does come with a plaque that will memorialize Mr. Galley's father by the flagpole, and so we're pleased about that and able to honor his father as well. With respect to the Unibank donation and partnership you have in your packet, this so-called standard memorandum of understanding that we've used with other naming rights relationships, and this is another one of those. So, in exchange for the thirty-five-thousand-dollar donation, the ticket booth would be, there'd be naming rights on the ticket booth for a ten-year period with signage, Unibank signage on the ticket booth itself, and everything else is kind of standard language that you've seen before from other MOUs. So, I don't want to steal any thunder from Unibank, and if it's okay, turn it over to them to talk a little bit more about this opportunity.
Welcome to you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, school committee members. It is with great pleasure to be here on behalf of Unibank this evening. One of the cornerstones of Unibank's mission is its commitment to the communities in which it serves. As a Shrewsbury High School alum and longtime town resident, I am so thrilled to work for a company that allows me the opportunity to give back to a community that has given so much to me and to others. With that, it is our honor to present you tonight with a check for the ticket booth sponsorship at the new Shrewsbury High School stadium. We really are very thrilled to be here. We're so thrilled to be able to give back to such a fantastic community, and we are very excited for this partnership with the Shrewsbury Public Schools. So, thank you for the opportunity.
And I will just add to that as well. I mean, again, on behalf of the broader Unibank team, I think our commitment to various different communities is really paramount for us in our day-to-day. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you all, and it's been a pleasure working with that.
Colleagues, questions or comments for either our guests or Dr. Sawyer or Mr. Collins? Seeing none, we have two votes before us tonight. I will entertain a motion that the committee vote to accept a gift of ten-thousand dollars from the Galley family in honor of Hugo J. Galley for the athletic field project at the high school.
So, moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. I'll also entertain a motion that the school committee vote to approve the memorandum of understanding included in our meeting materials regarding the proposed sponsorship for the athletic field project at Shrewsbury High School by Unibank, including the acceptance of the funds for the sponsorship.
So, moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. So, thank you both, and I believe we are going to be doing a photo?
Yes, so if you want to come on up in front here, we can stand behind and facsimile of the check.
We can all just stand in front. That's probably better.
I'm going to give you the real check.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
The bank will take this one.
Step in, step in, step in. Let's go, let's go.
We've got to get the big check in front, of course.
Dale, can I have you hold that up?
Sure.
Slide right.
Balance it and up a little bit. Just tip the front toward a bit for the glare.
Here we look at it first.
Oh, go ahead. Start there.
Okay.
Go down the line.
that and able to honor his father as well. With respect to the Unibank donation and partnership you have in your packet, this so-called standard memorandum of understanding that we've used with other naming rights relationships, and this is another one of those. So, in exchange for the $35,000 donation, the ticket booth would be, there'd be naming rights on the ticket booth for a 10-year period with signage, Unibank signage on the ticket booth itself. And everything else is kind of standard language that you've seen before from other MOUs. So I don't want to steal any thunder from Unibank. And if it's okay, turn it over to them to talk a little bit more about this opportunity.
Welcome to you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, school committee members. It is with great pleasure to be here on behalf of Unibank this evening. One of the cornerstones of Unibank's mission is its commitment to the communities in which it serves. As a Shrewsbury High School alum and longtime town resident, I am so thrilled to work for a company that allows me the opportunity to give back to a community that has given so much to me and to others. With that, it is our honor to present you tonight with a check for the ticket booth sponsorship at the new Shrewsbury High School stadium. We really are very thrilled to be here. We're so thrilled to be able to give back to such a fantastic community. And we are very excited for this partnership with the Shrewsbury Public Schools. So thank you for the opportunity.
And I will just add to that as well. I mean, again, on behalf of the broader Unibank team, I think our commitment to various different communities is really paramount for us in our day-to-day. So again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you all. And it's been a pleasure working with Pat.
Colleagues, questions or comments for either our guests or Dr. Sawyer or Mr. Collins? Seeing none, we have two votes before us tonight. I will entertain a motion that the committee vote to accept a gift of $10,000 from the Galli family in honor of Hugo J. Galli for the athletic field project at the high school.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. I'll also entertain a motion that the school committee vote to approve the memorandum of understanding included in our meeting materials regarding the proposed sponsorship for the athletic field project at Shrewsbury High School by Unibank, including the acceptance of the funds for the sponsorship.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. So, thank you both. And I believe we are going to be doing a photo?
Yes. So if you want to come on up in front here, we can stand behind and facsimile of the check. We can all just stand in front. That's probably better.
I'm going to give you the real check.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. The bank will take this one.
All right, everybody, step in, step in, step in. Let's go, let's go.
We've got to get the big check in front, of course.
Dale, can I have you hold that up?
Sure.
Some of us slide around.
Balance it and up a little bit. Just tip the front toward a bit for the glare.
Okay, who are we looking at first?
Oh, go ahead. Start there.
Okay. Go down the line.
Do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Take care. I'll see you soon.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thanks. So, moving along with our agenda, the next item we have tonight is our annual report from the athletics department. Each fall, the athletic director presents a report to the school committee that summarizes athletic participation, achievements, and the budget during the previous year. That full report is enclosed with our meeting materials. We're going to hear a presentation on that report tonight from Mr. Jason Costa, Director of Athletics, who will begin by introducing us to his guests.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Along with me are two senior, our standout athletes at our school, three sport athletes, Delaney Kuchar and Nate Hottela. So they're going to help me out. We're going to go through the report a little bit and then have them say a few words. But thank you for having us. Before I begin today, I just really want to give a big thank you to Angela Snell, Parks and Recreation Program, and Kevin Esposito and his crew. They have worked tirelessly to get our fields ready. They had a very rough spring. That also led into a very rough fall. We, we say, I think this fall, 10 out of the last 10 Tuesdays, it's rained nine of them. So they've been working, working very hard to get our fields ready and be able to do the things that we've done this year and last year. So I would like to say thank you. Going forward, just some of the program highlights for us. Last year, we had 819 students participate in athletics. We offered 34 different sports. We had about 58 different teams at different levels. We also had over 800 contests last year. And that has increased from the past years based on the success we've had with a lot of our programs. And we've also were able to offer unified sports again in both track and basketball, which if you've ever been able to attend that event, it's just amazing. Amazing atmosphere and probably one of our most, our best-attended events each year. So. We also had 71 coaches and our volunteer numbers keep increasing each year. And I'm really grateful for the amount of volunteers that we have that want to be a part of our program. So we're excited about that. In our college, we had three students sign national letters of intent. And we had about 10 more students that were playing at various levels in college. A little bit of a graph, you can see over the past few years, we've increased. Our, our participation numbers have grown dramatically, looking from 2013, 14 to now. We had over 1,333 bodies. Some of those were multiple sports, which I'll get into later. But that's a lot of students participating in athletics. And if you can see the breakdown here, last year, the different grade levels, we used their class colors. You can see in our sophomore class, which is our biggest class, a great deal in number of students participating in athletics. Here's just by, by season, you'll see the grades. Again, I think you look at our sophomore class, which is now our current junior class, a big number of students participating over the years. And you see the trend too as you look at sophomore class, the freshman class. I'm sure this year is going to, you know, whenever I give this report next year, you'll see some growth. Here's one that has changed over the years. I think, you know, with different club sports offerings. And I'm very proud to say that we have a lot, still have a lot of students that participate in the three-sport level. So we had over, you know, about 112, 111, 100 or so students that participated in three sports throughout their career last year. If you take a look at the, the participation rate over the years, I think fall sports seems to be every year our biggest number. I always say to our students when they come back in the fall, it's just different energy. I think you guys would agree, being multiple sport athletes. In the fall, there's a lot more excitement. I think everyone's well-rested, rested. Come winter and spring, not that they're not exciting, but it's just that different vibe in the fall. We're very fortunate enough to continue to, you know, one of our goals in our athletic program is to produce leaders in the, in the community. And through this, we've been very fortunate to continue to be working with our student ambassador program, the MIAA. We've, we've attended and we will be attending this Friday, the MIAA Sportsmanship Summit, where we take about 10 to 12 students, usually juniors, people that we identify as possible leaders in our building, to go and learn more about how they can promote sportsmanship within our athletic program. Our captain summit, this will be our 13th year, we've ran our captain summit training program. And we actually are doing something unique this year where we're going to be doing a year-long program instead of that one day. And I'm very fortunate to have students that want to come and help out in the athletic office each day. Thank goodness they're there because they keep me on task and keep me well-organized. Success. I mean, last year, again, was another great year for our students. We had over 98 league all-stars. Four of those students were players of the year or MVPs of our league. We had 20, excuse me, 49 Telegram and Gazette all-stars. And to the right of me, the player of the year in girls hockey. Central Massachusetts all-stars, we had 29. All-state, we had five. And we had one All-American. So I was very excited about the success of some of our individual, individual success of some of our athletes. As far as teams went, we had another very great year. We had our football team, boys cross-country, boys and girls hockey, and boys and girls tennis win conference or league championships. Our football team and our softball team and girls tennis teams made it to the district finals. And for the second year in a row, our boys' ice hockey team was able to capture the Division III championship. So again, I think we had a lot of fun last year. I think a lot of people were tired come June, but it was good tired for us to have. I'd like to continue, you know, we're very fortunate based on our support groups. You know, the Shrewsbury Boosters Association, Friends of Shrewsbury Crew are two parent-run organizations that do just a outstanding job of raising money for our programs. Central One, not only, when we talk about the turf field project, but still was able to give us $20,000 towards our athletic program last year, which helped to fray the cost of uniforms and equipment needed. And then next year, when we talk about our turf field project, is, you know, it's people like Unibank Tonight that were able to help us get to what we were able to have this fall. And I'll be very happy to report that we're almost complete with the school board installation on our field. We are working now, we're going to take a break and do our donor stuff in the spring. But as you can see, it's a great complex. And I think one of the best things that happened was the other day when Telegram Gazette was at our place and tweeted out probably one of the best facilities in the state. And that made me very, very proud. And I thank everyone who has been involved in trying to help us with our facility for our athletes. So at this time, I would like to introduce Delaney and me to talk about their experience at the high school.
Um, as we saw, like in the fall, how things get really high up, like the numbers and girls, like participating, that's like the time of year where you want to make friends. Like for freshmen, that's like a really good time to like interact with upperclassmen, sophomores, juniors. Over the past years, I was able to play my seventh and eighth grade year for the ice hockey team for Shrewsbury High School. And like, that was just amazing. And being able to play for the high school at such a young age, like 12-years-old to be playing against 18-years-old people, it's just funny. And it really increases like your competitiveness and stuff like that. And leadership summits we were talking about, we were able to, we went to Gillette, we went to, our sophomore year, we went to Algonquin, I think it was like right before school started. And then we did the summits at the school. And we're doing the one all-year. And those really just focus on like the mentality of sports. Because it's not just like you having to show up on the field or on the ice or wherever you are. It's also like you being approachable, like an adult, and you're responsible, you're a 24-hour athlete and stuff like that. And leadership is very important in every team. And some teams, you can see where it lacks as, you know, like they don't.
Yeah.
So, playing three sports for four years straight is a lot. And I've had just about every type of coach you could possibly imagine. And I think Mr. Costa has a really great job of hiring our coaches because they really teach us, you know, how to be a leader. Like from, you know, freshman year, you know, I wasn't really sure of myself, you know, I wasn't much of a leader. But now I'm two-sport captain. And I've done the numerous amounts of leadership programs. You know, I've done all the Gillette, like everything he was telling us about. And I think that really helps us influence others around us. Because like, you know, they see the captain, you know, leading everybody. And those kids take notice and they start to do that as well. So I think, you know, as the coaches send that out to the kids, to the captains, and then the captains, you know, show the younger kids how to be leaders. I think that really keeps it going. And that's why I think we've had so much success in the last few years. Like, I've been on varsity sports for three years and I've only had two seasons where we didn't make playoffs. And that was only because we missed it by one game. So we just got unlucky those two seasons. But, yeah, I mean, I've met all kinds of coaches. And I think, I have to say the best of Shrewsbury High School. I mean, I've had, I know I can always talk to them and they can always, you know, ask me questions. I can always have a conversation with them after. But, yeah, that's about it. I mean, I really think we do a great job of becoming leaders and maturing as we grow older. And I really think that all comes down to Mr. Costa doing a great job with it.
They're very humble about themselves. They have had a great career so far. We still have two more seasons with the both of them, which is great. I'm really looking forward to. And I'll be sad to see them go. And I think I say that each year is that the relationships you're able to build over the four years. But these two especially have, really have a strong presence in our hallways. And it's very nice to see them and watch them perform. And they've, I mean, you've seen their names in the paper a lot. And you know what's great too is having young children now idolizing them. You hear their names in our house a lot. And that's really nice to see. And I'm really glad they were able to make it tonight. So, any questions?
Thank you. And thank you both to our student athletes for joining us tonight. Obviously, leadership development is one of the big advantages to our successful athletic program. And you are both obviously examples of that. So thank you for taking the time to be here. Colleagues, questions or comments? Mrs. Gonzano?
So, two questions. The first is if you can share with us the three sports that you do. I caught some of them, but if, if you can articulate the three. And the second question is about the captain summit and how it's changed from that one day to the full year. What does that look like? So if you could describe that afterwards. Yep.
Sure.
Okay. So I play field hockey, ice hockey, and lacrosse.
Okay.
And I play football, baseball, and basketball.
Okay. Wow. Well-rounded. You guys are awesome.
So, different, of the summit this year, typically we've done a one-day training program where we'll talk about what it means to be a leader, the responsibilities of a leader. That's usually in the morning session. We'll do some role-playing. We'll do some scenarios as far as being in difficult situations, both either within the sports or outside of school. And then the afternoon, we'll go over my expectations of what we have as, as leaders in our program. This year, what we did is we brought in, and thank you to our Booster Club for supporting that, we brought in a group that talked about mindsets. I think one of the things that I was struggling with last spring was the positive mindset. So, at this kick of going and reading a lot of books this summer, and it was funny at our leadership meeting, opening school, Dr. Sawyer had presented. I was like, already in the back of the room because I was really big, a part of my life this year. And we brought them in. And what we're doing this year is they train the students on talking, how to deal with situations or stress. And we talked about proper breathing, just even the simple things of how you breathe, inhale, exhale. I thought was an important feature for our students. And what they're doing is they're following up with us six times. So we've already had two follow-ups in the fall, two in the winter and two in the spring. And, you know, this last follow-up that we had about a week ago, a little nervous because some of the seasons were over and not sure if, you know, some of the captains would still be engaged. And they were all there. So, made me feel good and I'm really excited about to see, because we're in kind of uncharted waters of this program, but I'm really excited to see what happens, you know, come June with the outcome of the program.
It seems to be a really good goal, a good focus on, on developing leaders. And I, I think that was demonstrated here by these two tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Further question. Mrs. Fritz?
I think for me, looking at that turf field and finally, I mean, we had talked about it years ago when my kids were at the high school, is that ever going to be a part of it? And to see it finally be here, it's so exciting. And for Delaney, I think the girls' field hockey is the first official game. What did you think about that?
Um, I think it's different because our turf is like the sand. I don't know what it is, like sand turf. And normally we play on like the rubber. And I've played on like AstroTurf before, but the ball movement's a little different. But it was just incredible to like be able to actually say that I've played on the turf because it wasn't exactly for sure going to happen. And then seeing it actually happen and us getting our games on it was awesome.
Exciting. Great. And for Mr. Costa, when we're looking at the budget, now that we're seeing more students at the high school, the whole, I'm looking at for uniforms and equipment, is that something you see is going to be more of an issue where we have more students? How, how do you foresee that going forward?
Well, typically when we do the replenishing of uniforms, we trickle down effect where we'll take the varsity uniform, move them down to a JV, and a JV will move down to either the ex-JV program or the freshman program. I do think we are, you know, with the increased number of bodies, not knowing too what the size of students, especially the freshmen coming in, that might be a little bit of an issue that we kind of want to monitor a little bit. Right now, we're doing, I think, a pretty good job of managing. I know with adding of the middle school sports, there's going to be some costs this year as far as uniforms go, that we'll be able to, I think, we budgeted for, we'll be able to take care of and then monitor. You know, it could be that trickle-down effect, but I kind of want to keep middle school separate, you know, so there's like a different, I say this, I think the most exciting thing of us when we entered field hockey this fall was students were so excited to represent Oak Middle.
Yeah.
And there's a very, it was a great moment to see and hear that from those students. So, we'll keep an eye on it.
And a good feeder program. But great. Thank you.
Mr. Wensky?
Yeah, just like to thank you for the report. Great report. Clearly sustained success for the program. And we saw it into the fall with the football and the, the girls volleyball team, I know did well as well. I also appreciate, actually what Delaney said about the, you know, being aged 12 and being able to compete in, in school sports competitions. My daughter actually had an opportunity to do that at Oak through the, the cross-country team. She had a great experience in September and October. So I think it's really important. And then to the turf field too. If I'm correct, I think there were a couple of competitions at the, the field this past weekend that were, were those like rentals?
So, Shrewsbury Use Soccer was there, using the field on Saturday. And then these were the district MIAA soccer finals. There's no rental with that as far as it's helping out the association, giving back to the association. Typically, we were able to help out with concessions there. But I looked at that as a great opportunity for us to showcase our, our place. And it was very interesting because Oxbridge and Douglas started off the day. And Oxbridge has a turf field. And they're, to have their folks come in and say, wow, wow. They felt like they were entering a college campus. And I think that was the theme of our committee is to give that kind of college feel of, of our facilities. So, very proud of that.
I bring it up because I did see the comments by some local media about it being one of the best facilities in the state. So I was really impressed with those impressions. And it can only have a ripple effect. So, it's great.
Thank you.
Dr. McGee?
Thanks for the presentation today. And thanks to the students for coming and talking to us. I'm
...
..............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Yeah, so I think the swim numbers, um, off the top of my head, I want to say we had between thirty-five uh, and forty uh, students participating in our hockey programs. Um, all together with boys, girls and JV, I want to say we're around sixty students participating in our hockey program.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Colleagues, anything further? Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
Uh, I want to thank our student athletes for being here. Uh, they've, they've done an excellent job in their careers and I, you know, it's excellent to hear that what they're getting um, from beyond just the athletic training, but obviously leadership and life lessons that are, that are important, why we want to provide a robust athletic program um, for our students and uh, it's something that uh, you know, will affect you uh, really for your entire life. I, I was reminded of that this week. The uh, actually my former high school coach, JV basketball and varsity baseball coach and longtime assumption football coach, uh, Bernie Guyan passed away, uh, and uh, he was extremely well regarded in Central Massachusetts as, as a coach. And uh, you know, lessons I learned from him stay with me today and so these are things that last a lifetime in terms of the impact that, that high school athletics can have on individuals uh, and on teams. Uh, I do want to also thank uh, Mr. Costa for his leadership. I want to thank him particularly for this past season for his management skills. Uh, because before the field opened up, as, as many know, uh, because of the wet weather, the, the track uh, portion of the field was delayed. Uh, weren't able to use the facility until really um, October. Um, and during the first part of the, the season, he was rescheduling games, finding other facilities for, for players to practice and play. Um, it was a lot of extra work and he really pulled it off uh, with a lot of uh, uh, hard work and, and uh, but did it in a way that uh, tried to balance all the different needs of all the different teams and that was something that I thought was outstanding. Um, and really was able to make sure that the fall sports were able to progress the way they should, um, despite the lack of a home facility for a, a period of time. Uh, but once we're able to get on and hopefully well worth the, the wait uh, in terms of being able to, to make use of that excellent facility for which we're, we're so grateful um, to all of our donors and, and sponsors that, that we've made that a reality. Uh, but again, it's, it's particularly, uh, it's an important program uh, for a school uh, to have. We have a robust program, uh, lots of success. Uh, but I was pleased to hear about the impact that um, our, our coaches are having. Uh, we thank them for their hard work. They're compensated, but certainly when the amount of time and effort that they put in, it, it's the compensation really is secondary to their passion uh, for wanting to, to coach a sport and especially to work with our, our young student uh, people and their, our student athletes. Um, so thank you uh, to everyone in the program uh, on our behalf and uh, good luck the rest of the season and uh, good luck to you as you finish up and go on to bigger and better things. Uh, when Delaney actually was, today was an important day because today was signing day, correct?
Yes.
Uh, you want to share with the, the committee where you're, where you're headed next year?
Um, Providence College.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Play ice hockey, which is terrific and uh, need, no decision yet, is, is?
No decision, yeah, still working on that.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll be looking forward to finding out. So, congratulations and again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, uh, each year we receive a report uh, that includes student performance data on the SAT, the SAT II and advanced placement tests as well as some others uh, for our annual testing report. Uh, Mr. Todd Vizilow, our Shrewsbury High School principal and Mrs. Ma Wen, who is our director of uh, school counseling at Shrewsbury High School, will summarize the report that we have received, so welcome and thank you to you both.
Thank you for having us and it's our pleasure to come out tonight and share some of the great things that are happening at the high school relative to our testing uh, and the metrics we're going to see tonight. Let me just see if I can find play here. This is Wen, there we go. All right. So, um, as you've seen your packet, there's a number of uh, graphs and tables and we'll review uh, quickly uh, the salient points from our testing data for uh, two thousand eighteen. What's important to note is that Mrs. Wen will talk specifically about some of the changes that are happening within the college board that are affecting schools throughout the state and nation. There's been a lot of um, conversation and discourse amongst college boards and locals, local secondary schools uh, here in New England, but also uh, across the country, so. We'll talk about some of those changes, the impact that it could have on, on our programming and some of our operations. Um, but they're significant from my perspective and we'll talk a little bit about that tonight as well.
So, just in terms of a quick reminder, um, the SATs and the ACT um, tests are um, offered to students mostly in their junior and their senior years. Um, and one of those tests are required um, for a number of schools um, for admission to college, although we have more schools that are score optional at this point. Um, the subject tests are really required only um, from about forty-five to fifty colleges, sometimes for very specific programs. Um, and it's um, a program that's dwindling and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. The PSAT and MSQT and the plan are both um, kind of the pre-tests for the SAT and the ACT alike. And then we have the advanced placement exams where students can earn either college um, credit or placement out of the intro level courses at college. So, um, some of the changes that we've already experienced, as you can see, um, in two thousand sixteen, the college board revised their SAT, so um, they have broken up the verbal and the math and the writing, which is now, has become the evidence-based reading and writing and math um, scores. And then the writing, um, s- the separate writing score has been eliminated. So, um, with the history of the SAT, it used to be um, the two scores were counted as eight hundred each um, section. It used to be sixteen hundred, then added the writing twenty-four hundred and now it's kind of come back to the sixteen hundred. Um, some of the changes to the administration, um, both the SAT and the ACT, ACT have added on summer test um, dates. So, students now have the option of testing in the summer. Um, with that, some of the actual score reporting comes out much later now because of the delay um, that they're adding in those, um, they're factoring in the summer test dates um, for their stats. Um, the other, one of the biggest changes is that the um, the PSAT, um, we always offer it on, historically always offer it on a Saturday. Um, what the, the big push with the college board now is to offer it on a school day testing. So, at this point, they're calling the Saturday testing the optional test date. Um, and they, they did a, um, a huge push this year to try to get schools to do the Wednesday, which is the um, school day testing. And with that, um, more and more schools are signing into that. Um, I'm seeing more and more districts that are actually paying for their both sophomores and juniors. And, and some schools are, are really kind of um, organizing an entire school day around testing. So, I know this year they really did a big push in trying to allow some schools to offer the um, SAT at the same time for seniors um, during the same test date as the PSAT to pilot. So, they're really trying to push, um, because they're trying to push this, I think there's been a lot of um, pushback from schools in Massachusetts and New England. Um, I believe most of the country, they're doing school day testing. Um, where they're finding the Saturday testing is in New England, primarily Massachusetts because a lot of schools don't want to give up a school day instruction time for the testing piece. So, there's been um, a big push with that and along with that as well, because we are now an optional test date, they've actually changed some of the um, how would they report out the um, scores. So, students um, traditionally when they take the PSAT, we get to keep the test booklet so that they can actually, when they get the scores, look at their test booklet, the questions, um, review the answers with that. They no longer allow that for the optional um, test date. And then they also are doing different score reporting as well for students. They still have access to Khan Academy, but the individualized score reporting may not be as robust as a student doing on a test day. There have been a little bit of a talk that they may eventually eliminate the Saturday, forcing schools to do it on a Wednesday. Right now, it's just talk, but they are really trying to move towards that. Um, and because of that, um, they now have increased their um, testing twenty-five percent nationally because of the school day testing. So, it's really um, something that the college board has been pushing. Uh, I, I believe also partially because of the competition with the ACT as well, so they've really expanded their program as much as possible.
If I may, they've, they've expanded programming and testing down to the eighth grade level. There's an eight, nine test, there's a ten test and now there's the regular SAT, so I, I think what you're seeing, um, I'm not sure if it's a not-for-profit or nonprofit, um, but certainly the numbers would say that they're making a lot of money. And a number of schools uh, regionally and across the country have shifted towards providing these all-day tests for all grade levels with school districts picking up the tab for a lot of those tests. So, they'd administer all those tests concurrently uh, during a school day, so they have a testing day. Um, I have my own opinions about testing and the frequency of testing, what that means for us. Uh, I'm not sure if my opinions here tonight would be relevant, but I'll certainly talk about those if you want me to. Um, I just think that the college board is creeping into uh, some, some territory that we, we're not familiar with, which is causing a lot of um, upset across uh, the state and, and in some, certainly some high-performing school districts in terms of what that looks like, meeting state requirements for a number of hours, uh, disrupting instruction in order to take a test. What does that test mean with SAT optional schools? There's a number of things associated with it and there's been a lot of uh, conversation about that, so. I'm sorry for interrupting, but you can continue on.
Not at all.
Um, and in the next year to come, um, for the next testing, testing report, I'll talk a lot of more about a lot of changes to the AP administration. They're making a, a whole host of changes um, in terms of how they administer the test, the registration process has been um, being pushed back much earlier. So, there's a whole lot of, um, a lot of detailed stuff that I can talk about next year that will, when it comes into play. Um, with all of these changes, um, we look at how they are now um, reporting the scores. So, um, right now when we look at it, um, with the SATs, typically we've always reported the cohort of the graduating class scores. Now, what they're doing, what they report to the state is only the um, the prior school year. So, they're reporting the mean scores of two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen scores, which can include grades nine, ten, eleven and twelve. So, it's um, it's a different um, cohort that they're reporting now. For high schools, we can still, it takes a little, takes a little while, but we can, they're still sharing the cohort um, scores. Um, I think one thing that we've just started to talk about, some, uh, some other districts are reporting it differently as well. We can extract the scores from Naviance and they act, the, the mean scores are a little bit higher because they only take the higher scores. So, and some do the true, right now we still continue to report the true cohort scores from the college board as our mean scores. Um, when I looked at the difference, it's, it's, there's not too much difference. Um, but I know that some schools, different schools are doing different things now with the way that um, they're starting to report. Um, the other piece is the SAT subject tests. They're no longer formally reporting it with the cohort scores. Um, so the, the scores that you see in the report are what I dig out of um, what we receive from the college board in terms of looking at individual scores to um, to develop the means, um, the mean scores from that. Um, I, what I have heard conversations from the college board is that that may be phasing out too um, in terms of really determining the subject scores. The, the other piece about the subject scores is I've always been able to um, compare our mean scores with the state means and the national means. At this time, the states are not, the state means are not available and the national means are now calculated over a course of two years of testing and no longer with the cohort. So, I think they're going through a lot of changes and with their new redesigned SAT, even though it's in its second year, I think they're also still trying to figure out how they want to report everything out. So, there's been a lot of changes with that. So, with that said, we do have some scores. Um, looking at the um, redesigned, just, and I mentioned this a second ago, the um, the, each individual subset scores are still within the range of two hundred to eight hundred. Um, and we'll report out the sixteen hundred scale in terms of looking at um, both. So, you could see two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen is um, the reports from the redesigned um, SAT. And our scores have increased along with the states and if you look at nationally, it just has a slight dip nationally, so.
We, we, we take a look at trends relative to gender-based testing as well and as you'll see in the reading and writing, females in two thousand eighteen outperformed males in terms of mean score, six oh six versus five ninety-eight. And when we look at math scores, it's a little bit different with males outperforming females, six twenty-seven to six oh six. So, we try and figure those things out. I think what uh, Mrs. Clower and I had a conversation today between fourth grade scores and eighth grade scores, what that means and how they correlate, we haven't really figured that out yet, but we're working on it.
And um, again, this is the subject test scores. So, this is how um, all of our students did and as you can see, the number of students that actually um, take the subject tests. Our um, our students continue to do very well. Again, I don't have the, the national or state averages to um, compare them to, but if you can see the number of students that actually take them, it's pretty low too. So, physics, we only had eight students. Typically in a score report with the college board, um, once you hit a certain number of students, they don't even calculate the mean because it's too small of a sample. So, in terms of the PSAT, um, again, our students do very well in the PSAT. Um, each year, um, students are listed as a commended students. For students who score in the top two percent, in the top one percent are the finalists and they go through an application process. Usually they're identified as a semi-finalist, they apply, become finalists. And for students who actually are scholarships, um, recipients, we had one last year. Um, it's usually about twenty-five hundred dollars and most colleges will match that. Um, in terms of looking at the ACT, um, as you can see, we've had a slight increase and I also think that that's also attributed to an increase in enrollment as well. Um, typically students will either do better on one exam or the other, but right now it's a little too soon to tell with the redesigned SAT because the redesigned SAT um, is now more similar to the ACT. So, if you look at our scores, um, I just read an article recently that the national score, um, mean scores, they saw that the SE- ACT scores have dipped a little bit. Um, for us, it's, it's pretty much the same. Um, it's that we look at the composite score, which is the average of all of the, the four subsets and it's about the equivalent to a twelve sixty on the ace, on the SAT.
As you know, we've increased our advanced placement programming uh, seemingly exponentially in the last twelve, fourteen years. Um, as we look at the number of participants in our school, we've really held true to what college board was talking about relative to who should participate in college-level programming. Primarily eleventh and twelfth graders with having a very small percentage of students participating rate nine and ten. We don't offer those classes at the high school for grades nine and ten. However, you'll see, we're seeing a trend relative in the community of people self-studying and then taking the test at the end of the year. Again, particip- participation rates are up. We had seven hundred and sixty-five tests administered to three hundred eighty-four students. Uh, if you look back in two thousand and nine, we had two hundred thirty-six students, so it's continuing to increase um, in terms of participation and we'll talk a little bit about how we perform here. The blue bar graphs, for those that are watching at home, are our average scores relative to the entire cohort for people that take courses. The green, uh, the red bars are the Massachusetts average and the national average is the green. As you can see, we're well above the state and national average across the board. I think this comes down to having really well-prepared students coming into the school from K to eight uh, and then nine through ten and then being prepared uh, with some really solid instruction in the dedication of our staff to kind of get the results that we get. Again, we look at overall scores, ninety-four percent are three and above. It's a good news story. Uh, we've increased participation, increased uh, number of tests administered and we've maintained that, that uh, performance. We've, uh, this is a little bit inverse. If you look at the number of national percentage of students who take tests and you look at our percentages, it's a little bit different. It's kind of inverse of what happens in the nation. We have more people taking more courses as they progress through where a number of people in the nation take one or two courses. Where one per, taking one course or one test is really the smallest percentage of students we have. Where two and three and four plus are the, constitute the highest percentages. Again, we've had our highest number of AP scholars and this comes down to the number of tests you take, the scores that you receive. Um, it's another thing that students uh, strive to achieve and I, I will say this and we can talk about admissions, but there's no set uh, formula to get into schools. I think parents believe that if I take X number of advanced placement courses, I am going to get admission into X university. It's beyond that. It's a building a profile of a class and I know we've talked about that before. that before. Certain schools need an oboe player, certain schools need, uh, someone who lives in Idaho. Um, those aren't kids from Massachusetts. So the competitive nature of building a school profile for, uh, a college is a little bit different, and I caution parents who are watching or listening that advanced placement isn't the answer to get admission into the college. It certainly is a very rigorous course load, very rigorous instruction, very rigorous assessments, however, that doesn't guarantee any admission into it. And we talk about this at Advanced Placement Night, which we have in the spring with parents and families. I think there is a certain level of, uh, I don't want to say stress, but there's certain li- there is a certain level of, we need to get this programming in order to get in the college and university, and that's just not accurate.
So what we give to every single college, um, is our school profile. So it, we, it is send off, um, send it off with, um, the student's application, the transcript, um, and the school profile. But colleges can, they get to know what Shrewsbury High School is about, um, in terms of what our offerings are, um, including the community demographics, our graduation requirements because they differ from school to school. We look at the course levels, that's, um, important to colleges in terms of, um, not only the class that the students are taking, but the levels that they're taking, what that overall program looks like. We look at the GPA scale, um, and we also report out our AP SAT, um, mean scores to the colleges as well. In the future, um, just a little section about the future plans, um, report from the number of students who, um, attend four-year, two-year colleges from the year before. What's interesting, um, and I've had conversations with the colleges about our school profile regarding AP exams, is that we do state in our profile that we recommend for students to take no more than three, um, AP exams. I think sometimes there are mixed messages from colleges telling students and families that the more you can take, the better too. So sometimes it's mixed messages, but our students have done well, and the colleges know that we recommend no more than three per year, um, because then a lot of times we see the stress level rising, so.
Additionally, I want to, uh, credit the school counseling department for changing the profile and the way it looks based upon their feedback they received from local admissions officers with their visits around the admission process. Uh, some colleges and universities in the Worcester area have provided us, I think we talked about this previously, about ways that we can increase our profile relative to get the most important information right in front of admissions counselors with, uh, that Mrs. Wen and her department have, have changed the profile and the reporting of the profile to, to meet the needs or demands to a certain extent of what admissions is looking for to highlight our students' achievements. Is it me or you?
It's me.
I can do it. I think when we look at our scores, I think we, uh, we offer on-ground test prep. I think there's a number of options that, uh, parents can, uh, and students can opt into, whether it's private, very expensive, um, test prep. We offer on-ground with our own teachers in the building, which is very affordable. We offer two sessions, one in the fall, one in the spring, and it usually maxes out. Kids see appreciable gains with this. I will tell, uh, the committee and parents this, is you get what you put in. Um, I think when parents will say to their kids, you need to take test prep, and they say, I really want to take test prep, you need to take test prep, um, those typically aren't the most successful, uh, test prep people in the sense of they're not fully invested and committed to it. So I caution parents around that as well, like, you have to be committed to test prep in order for it to work. Um, but we've also offered, uh, PSAT to all juniors and sophomores, and you see a chart, uh, showing the number of students that participate in that, and also the number of fee waivers that we apply for through, uh, grant. Again, we do this every year when the scores come in, uh, in August, when the scores are reported by the College Board, I will get notifications in my email constantly all day, the scores are released, which is in like mid-August, of teachers who are identifying the sections of students that they've had in their caseload to look at their scores to determine how well their students did on the AP exam. It's, it's pretty, um, remarkable, the dedication of the people that are working this program, and they want to see the results, so that's a good indicator. Um, I'm not sure if they know that I get those emails, but I get them, uh, pretty consistently for about two weeks as they, as they look at their scores, which is great. And we also look at continuing opportunities for students beyond the traditional AP offerings, and we've grown the program to offer some really, I won't say non-traditional, but certainly areas of different interest, particularly around, uh, AP environmental. And we still have struggles with AP languages of getting, uh, solid cohorts and having enough, uh, FTE to meet the demands, particularly AP Latin has been a challenge every year, uh, to fill the course requests from students. Um, and again, a good news story is we've increased participation in ACT for 2018. We'll take any questions you have of, of us.
Thank you both. Questions and comments from the committee, Mrs. Fritz.
I have a question on the PSAT for that profitable nonprofit college board that we're talking about. What is the, the fee for those, the tests now?
Um, I believe we charge twenty-seven dollars.
It's, it's not outrageous, but, uh, and did they give any reason for this test day, you know, during the week, other, I mean, you can see, it's a very profitable thing for them to move to.
Yes.
But did they have any other reasoning that they explained?
Um, no.
I would, I would say this, I think that they, I think they will use access and equity as, as an answer to that, and there is certain validity within that for certain demographics and certain communities, without a doubt.
True.
I think they're trying to provide opportunities for students throughout the country, which I can't argue with. Um, I, I think I struggle when we think of the amount of days and the amount of instruction we have in, in, uh, our school and how valuable that is when we have an out, uh, an outside agency dictating to us how we're going to use instructional time locally.
Right, sure.
That, I have a problem with that, just maybe that's me being too provincial. Um, but I, I do feel that it, we're losing the autonomy of, of dictating or, or figuring out when we want to administer that and what works for best for students and families.
Right, and I think it's admirable that, uh, this organization wants to make sure that it's accessible to everyone. Um, but again, for us, I personally agree, I think taking a day out, a full day, is not acceptable, um, because I think the bottom line is really profit for this company.
Another comment I'll say, and we didn't get into this around advanced placement, the, the changes for advanced placement are significant in terms of late fees that are, they're going to charge students. Um, we're talking forty dollars an exam if you don't sign up through their system prior to, say, October. If we cancel a test, a school district will be charged an additional forty dollars for people who don't sit for exams. So there's a number of things that are still being worked out through. This is a, we sent a counselor to a, a conference about this, and there was a lot of people who were not happy about this. They've started to make some adjustments, but they're not, uh, stepping back from their original, there's going to be some significant costs on students, which, um, I think, uh, Mrs. Wen and I have had conversations, have significant issues with, of putting the cost of these tests, additional fees on the students and families, and onto the school district if we opt not to give tests. So we need to keep the committee and the superintendent aware of what's happening across, and I'm sure they've had conversations with, at least Dr. Sawyer's had conversations with his colleagues in different districts around this, because there is a lot, a lot of conversation about it.
Mrs. Fritz, go.
A lot of the, uh, AP courses, I know I've read some articles that are also talking about, um, maybe it's not the best thing for students to be taking AP courses, that it's, it's not getting them, like you said, maybe into a college that they think they're going to get into, and that some colleges are leaning away from even looking at it as something above and beyond. Is that something you're seeing, or is it just really mixed?
Um, I think it's mixed right now. I think that's more, it's newer information, um, that people are starting to catch on to. I know we've had conversation about some of the elite private schools that have eliminated AP from their curriculum completely, um, just because I, I think they think that the curriculum is, the AP curriculum is dictated by the College Board, so you do have to follow pretty rigid, um, curriculum in terms of the information. I don't know how much the students are really learning in terms of the process, more than, um, a huge amount of information that they have to re-memor, re, uh, memorize and, um, spit back. But I, I think that there are some co- or elite schools, we have this con- robust conversation about, um, schools who are looking to eliminate AP partly because they don't want to be dictated to in terms of a curriculum, but, um, they have more flexibility in offering different things at the same quality or better.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. McGee.
Just, uh, building on Sandy's, uh, questions, a lot of fine detail here, but I'm really interested in some big-picture thinking from you, because it seems that when we were dealing with the innovation in learning group, there was a lot of questioning regarding testing and, and, uh, uh, the vagaries of it in the sense that, on the one hand, the, the students are taking a, a subject test, and they're taking MCAS, and they're taking SATs or PSATs or whatever, and that's just crowding out learning. And then the other part of it is, is that it seems that when one looks at future success, um, the ability of these evaluations to predict, uh, someone's ability to succeed in the future is limited. And so there's a, a move, uh, my understanding is a move away from these sorts of things and looking to alternate ways of evaluating a student's performance, um, looking more towards their ability to think critically and do creative thinking. What I'm hearing today is that the, the College Board is pushing back by just sort of turning up the heat on exactly what their product is, and, um, I'm just wondering if, if this is, uh, a move in the right direction, or are they, uh, accelerating their own demise?
Well, that's a great question. I would, I would say, um, I, from my perspective, I think there, there is a certain level of value within taking, uh, an, an advanced placement course based on the rigor, and I think there are studies out there that say that if you, if students are successful with an advanced placement, the attrition rates after second year of college, uh, are significantly reduced as a result of having that, being exposed to that programming prior to enrolling in college/university. So to a certain extent, for some students, that's a benefit. That means they're going to finish college, they'll get a degree if they enroll in a four-year college or two-year college, and that's really good news. I think part of it is, uh, the other piece, I feel a little bit like it's an arms race. Um, I think there's an, there's an, there's this idea, and I alluded, and I said it, there's an idea out there that we need to take as many advanced placement courses as possible to get into the best colleges and universities in the country. Uh, I think that people chase that narrative or chase that dream of doing that at the expense of their own stress levels and health, well-being.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm not sure that's healthy for kids, I just don't know. I think, uh, the number of people who want to do that and are doing that are certainly, um, there's, there's certainly social pressures from parents, there's certainly social pressures from kids to do this stuff. Um, and it's not for everyone. I do think it's, it's, there, there is some value in it, but I also, uh, worry about losing, uh, like I said, our autonomy around what that looks like. So the jury's out. Um, I wish we had some big, I don't disagree with you, I think that we should be developing assessments that, that look at students' creativity, critical thinking, portrait of graduate skills that we've talked about, um, and developing those assessments and being able to report those out to colleges and universities in a way that is meaningful is the challenge, and I think we're at the infancy of that. But I do think we need to push upon that, uh, at the high school. Um, if I were to say to you, we're going to remove advanced placement at the high school, I said this last night at a school council meeting, I think we'd have, uh, I don't know, thirty-six hundred parents at the front door with, uh, torches and pitchforks, um, and saying, get rid of that principal. Uh, so there's a balance with it, right? There's a balance with it. I think what you'll hear from people, even last night at school council, said, my niece or my nephew's in Connecticut, and the question is, how come you're not taking advanced placement sophomore year? My daughter's taking three at this school in Connecticut, and it's like, um, and those numbers, believe it or not, at, at the col- the College Board releases, uh, we're talking probably upwards of twenty-eight percent now in grade nine and ten are taking advanced placement program in, in the nation, where five years ago, that was less than seven percent, six percent? So there's been this societal, in my opinion, there's been a societal shift of the importance of these exams in the admissions process. Uh, and when kids go on visits to RPI, to, and their student tours, it's, you got to get all those APs in you can, because this is how you're going to succeed. And I, I'm not sure that's what, uh, colleges want to be, I'm, I'm not sure, that's what kids are hearing when they visit colleges. So they come back with this and they say, okay, we have to do this. If I want to get into X school, engineering school, uh, whatever it is, elite school, whatever, whatever those schools are, I have to do this in order to get in. And they understand the competition as well. I mean, it's not just net, local, regional, it's nat-, it's international competition.
Hmm.
It's all from my long-winded answer.
No, it's good. And I think back to what you, um, you know, alluded to in terms of all the different testing from the MCAS to the PSAT, ACT, with all of that, there are twenty states that require the SAT, um, and that actually fund it, and some, some states are actually using it as the graduation requirement, kind of like their MCAS, um, for us, equivalent. But it's, um, it's, it's, there's a hu- been a huge push the past few years with the College Board for that to increase.
Further questions or comments from the committee? Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
Uh, I'd like to thank Ms. Wen and Mr. Bizzillo. Uh, I think this is something that, uh, we need to continue to monitor closely, uh, you know, our, our responsibility is to, to student learning first and foremost. Uh, obviously, there, there are expectations, particularly at the high school level, around what kinds of experiences and how students can build a transcript, uh, and how, you know, what they might be prepared for in terms of standardized testing. Um, and something, you know, as Wen mentioned, test optional schools, uh, but depending on the kind of school students are looking at, they're looking at a larger state university, often that is more of a numbers game in terms of the admissions than a smaller school that might be test optional. Um, and so making sure our students, uh, have what they, uh, are looking for in terms of being able to qualify for experience beyond high school. Um, and that's where, you know, trying to provide a, a service to the, to our constituents to some degree, and where does that meet, um, our responsibility to try to promote what we think is, is right, uh, in terms of educational experiences that will prepare kids for life, uh, the, the strategic plan that we have, uh, been charged with, uh, but the vision that was built upon, which is the portrait of a graduate, our portrait of a graduate doesn't say, we're going to prepare kids to do really well at standardized testing. Um, and in some, to some degree, I think that can be a byproduct of good instruction and good educational experiences. Um, it obviously helps to familiarize with tests and strategies and things of that nature, but, um, and how is it that we're providing access and opportunity for all of our kids, not just those whose parents are savvy enough, uh, or who are doing things outside of, uh, the regular school program to prepare them? Um, so it's a very complex topic. Uh, but one thing that, uh, I, I can say, uh, is that, you know, in terms of the way Shrewsbury High School both focuses on, whether that's test preparation, um, or whether that's, uh, the AP piece itself, there has been more access, sensitivity to providing access to kids across the spectrum socio-economically, um, and making sure that, um, there's really good teaching and learning happening. Um, there are some constraints based on what the College Board might require for the curriculum, uh, but certainly based on my experiences, visits, or conversations I've had with Mr. Bizzillo and other leaders at the high school, um, there's really high-quality learning experiences happening in those classes. These are, this is not sit at a desk and drill and, and regurgitate. There, there are lots of thoughtful ways that our teachers are approaching the work and helping kids learn the content, um, and that's something that I think will serve them well regardless of where they go, uh, beyond, uh, that class. Um, so appreciate the time and the effort put into the report, and, uh, the, the College Board piece is concerning to me, I will be talking about that with some fellow superintendents at an upcoming meeting, um, and we'll see where this goes and, and where it evolves. But, uh, um, it is going to be, uh, we heard from, uh, when Commissioner Riley visited Oak Middle School, uh, and he, I've heard him speak on a number of occasions now, um, you know, he is suggesting we have to look at what's next for Massachusetts education and that the sort of reform era has served us well since nineteen ninety-three, but we need to look at, um, you know, there's a new iteration of MCAS, which we'll hear about in a moment from Ms. Clower, but, uh, we, we need to think about how are we measuring success? And what is, what is success really, and what does that look like? And how do we balance it with what we talked about at the beginning of the meeting and last night at the event, which is how do you balance that, uh, with kids' social and emotional well-being and, and making sure that we're providing, uh, you know, we, we don't want to turn school into something that kids, uh, see as a chore. Um, it should be something that's helping them become their best selves, and that's something that we have to continue to keep in mind. So thank you very much for the report.
Great, thank you.
Thank you both. Next item on our agenda, also on our curriculum, is the State Testing Results Annual Report. Uh, each year, we also receive a report on the district's performance on our state exams. Ms. Clower will summarize the enclosed report we've received relative to our performance on the MCAS exam and also be available to answer any questions, so I will turn it over to Ms. Clower.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
I'm going to echo two things that Mr. Bizzillo said as I open up my presentation. One of them is the annual nature of this being kind of like a checkup, um, and the other, a note of caution about not overinterpreting any one set of test results, um, because I think just as with a holistic checkup, you want to make sure that you get the picture of the patient as a whole person. And the equivalent here for us would be getting a good picture of a student from lots of, lots of information that we have. So, um, I purposely put this slide in at the beginning because I think, uh, standardized tests were designed to take the place of, you know, the inefficiency of sitting next to each student and finding out in-depth what they know, um, but because of the nature of the assessment, it's limited in what it can tell us. Um, and kids approach tests in different ways. I think, you know, back to the inception of the initial MCAS and unpacking all those boxes and some of the, um, protocols that were- that were really time-consuming in terms of, you know, having to return tests that had nosebleed smudges on them, and other things like that, and thinking, okay, we, the state has responded to making the testing process more doable, and the information more timely in terms, and I appreciate they're listening to us in terms of that. But I also think that even though we get a lot of information, and you certainly have it at your disposal in that report, it is just one moment in time. And so, as Dr. Sawyer said, I think it's important for us to keep our eye on the vision that we have in general. And you can see this kind of trans, you know, translated from a student perspective at Shrewsbury High School, that, you know, not having test scores define kids in their entirety. And although we have a lot of information about individual successes and challenges, we need to pay attention to all the information we have about student success. So, we celebrated the 25th anniversary of ed reform this year, silver anniversary for the state. And just like, you know, a vow renewal in a couple, you get to kind of mark what happened before and what happened after. I think, you know, we're looking forward to a better test, which means that the version of the test has been updated to reflect some new standards. And it's been recalibrated so that, you know, traditionally, because the tests for different grades were developed at different times, they weren't really equivalent in terms of their rigor. So the idea in this iteration is to test whether there is kind of equivalent levels of difficulty across the exams. And so we're, in our second year, we had a baseline year last year. And this will help, help us to see whether their aspiration for recalibration worked out, and give us a sense of comparison for a first time. So just as a reminder, as we're looking at the MCAS, we get two points of information. We have achievement scores, which is how students are achieving relative to the benchmark. And you see that summarized in your report as how many kids were meeting or exceeding expectations. And growth is how students perform over time relative to other students with similar score histories for the past two years, when, when possible. And that's complicated. So when we get to that part, we'll slow down a little bit. But overall, the idea is that we want to monitor how kids are performing and how they're growing. And, you know, it's important not to pay attention to one more than the other. Again, I think one of the things that's tricky is that if you are at the high end of the performance scale, there's not a lot of room to grow. And so that complicates and can result in some growth scores that could be falsely alarming to parents. So, the other piece is that we're still, in our last year, of a tale of two tests. So the science and technology slash engineering test, which is administered to grades five, eight, and 10, is still a legacy test. It's the old version of the test. So if you look at our scores here, you can see pretty consistently the state scores are in green, and we're the darker color. They hope to replace this legacy test for grade five and eight this year. And how well it matches the new science standards and practices will be something I'll be paying a lot of attention to. They're also changing the format of the test. But you can see we consistently outperform state averages. We have a, you know, pretty steady track record in terms of these results being pretty typical for us if we compare back to previous years. This is the grade eight. Typically, grade eight, especially under the legacy tests, was one of the more rigorous and tough tests to pass. Although you look at that 54% advanced or proficient score, and you think, wow, that's really atypical for Shrewsbury, if you look across grade eight scores, it's not atypical for this grade span. And again, that was something they were hoping to fix as they went to MCAS 2.0. And one of the trends that's also pretty consistent is scores increasing by 10th grade, pretty dramatically. So, you know, we can feel good about that score, both in terms of our outperforming the state and doing very well overall. So next we turn to English Language Arts. I'm ahead of myself talking than I am. Let me catch up. Okay. So if we look at English Language Arts overall, it's a good news story, as you can see from the report that you have in your packet, which goes into greater detail in terms of how we compare against the districts both in Asbit Valley and the districts that the state suggests are good, similar enrollment districts to us. Across the board, from grade three to grade 10, our, our percentage of students who are reaching benchmarks or exceeding them has increased to different degrees at different grade levels. But if we look at how we compare here, we're up in terms of grade three results. I still haven't caught up with myself. Sorry about that. From 69% in 2017 to 74% of students reaching that benchmark in 2018. And again, that, that puts us really at the top of our area districts in terms of how we perform in grade three. I think the key piece here is that, well, on one hand, we're saying be cautious about the interpretation of the data. It is really important to look at reading achievement by grade three, because we know that from terms of predictability for success, that's a really important number to watch, and that's a good one for us. And the news gets better when we get to grade four. We're up in grade four again, with nearly 80% of students meeting or exceeding benchmarks. And grades, you know, from last year, again, we only have one, one year of the data, but our results look pretty similar with small increases at both of those grade levels. In five and six, you see similar increases over last year, smaller incremental increases for grade five, larger increases for grade six. And although the number of kids reaching that benchmark is smaller overall, that's also true across the board. So it was important to include those comparisons in your booklet, because you can get a sense of, okay, well, this is our result in Shrewsbury. What does, what does that play out for with a bigger pool of data? So, in some, I think we are seeing some really good gains in ELA. And one of the things that's important to notice about the new MCAS exam is that in addition to having reading comprehension and also kind of skill-based questions, they have a bigger emphasis on finding evidence in text, responding thoughtfully, developing ideas, and assessing that in terms of writing components. So that's the, it's not just a reading test as the grades get on, it's also kind of a writing test as well. So here we have grade eight. Again, consistent increase over last year, also pretty similar in terms of the picture. We're looking at strong results in terms of ELA across the board. And then, you know, when we look at grade 10, it's a legacy test, it's not the new test. But there are very few high schools that outperform Shrewsbury High School in terms of our results there. So, we talked earlier about growth. Essentially, what you want to do is, is if you're looking at that graph, high achievement would be at the top, and then high growth would be at the far right. And you want to be in that quadrant where you have both. Those bubbles represent Sherwood, Oak, Coolidge, and Floral. The size of the bubble is commensurate with the size of the school. But you can see from broad strokes that everybody's in the right spot. And, you know, we continue to push on some of those differences between schools and look and see, you know, are there different rates of progress with various subgroups that we can use to refine our practice? But overall, you know, the picture is, is good. And again, the state really wants to see schools be, with a growth rate between four, you know, the 40th and 60th percentile, and we're right within that band. So if we look at kind of that as a checkpoint in terms of overall health for ELA, feel pretty good about that. When we look at the high needs subgroup, or students who are economically disadvantaged, or students with disabilities, students that form various racial subgroups, one of the things that we talk about is the achievement-opportunity gap. And this is one way of looking at that gap or assessing it. So if you can see here, the yellow are Shrewsbury high needs subgroups, the green are state high needs subgroups, and the dark blue are all students. And so when you look at growth, the measures of growth between our high needs and all of our students are pretty close. In other words, students are growing at relatively the same rate. We don't see appreciable differences there. When we look at the number of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations, that's where we see bigger differences. And again, I think that makes sense. When you think about students with disabilities, or students who are coming from behind into our schools, they're going to need more than a year's growth to keep up. So although we should feel pretty good about our rates, especially when compared to the state in one hand, we also do need to keep being mindful of that, because we might need more than a year's growth for some populations if we're really looking to get more kids at that benchmark. So in terms of math, these are grade three results for math. And again, I've tried to make it simple in terms of having the green be, represent the state scores, and the dark blue be Shrewsbury. In math, we have a different story in the sense we have slight, slightly lower rates of students meeting or exceeding the benchmark, but they're not that much different from last year to be alarmed. And again, in only our second year, it's kind of hard to see a trend or to know if it's meaningful in one direction or another. Overall, you can see we're outperforming the state. And in your packet, you can see we're still doing relatively well when we compare ourselves to other area districts. So similar to grade three, we saw 3% drop in terms of the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in grade four. But if you look at our results as compared to other area districts, we're second only to Southborough in the Asbit Valley, for example. So again, I don't want to overinterpret any of the results from any one test or one grade. There's very little change from last year's baseline in grade five. So when we look at grades three to five as a span, an elementary span, we're slightly down. But again, still doing pretty well. In grade six, we have 70% of our kids meeting or exceeding expectations, as the state defines it with the benchmarks. And again, in the green being the state, we're pretty consistently outperforming expectations there. And if we look at grade seven, we have a rising number of students meeting the benchmark. Again, we'll notice that the scores might be lower overall in grade seven, and that's something that bears watching, because it's across both subjects. And that's something that I'll be looking at, how that plays out in years to come. I'm wondering if grade seven is the new grade eight. But we don't really know yet with not only two years of In grade eight, we have, you know, good numbers there, too. I put this as a placeholder because I think it's important to really think about how a student history with the exam impacts their performance overall. So we have kids taking the exam as third graders, but we also have students taking the exam for a first time as a new beginner arriving in the high school. So some kids have a score history that goes back to third grade, and some kids arrive at Shrewsbury High School and have to pass that 10th grade, and they're just learning English at the same time. And that has programmatic expectations in terms of how we interpret things, too. So we have some really innovative programming happening at Shrewsbury High School, where we have a foundations math class that allows kids who have the math content but not the language to earn credit while they're figuring out the math piece and how they use language to communicate, and then allows them to stay in that program and be successful. So I promised that I would tell the story of one of our Shrewsbury High School students that really entered feeling really unsuccessful, and faced this daunting challenge of passing the grade 10 test in order to meet the graduation requirement. And, you know, with that kind of support, has really blossomed and is now on a different math track, having mastered that. So I think when we're talking about MCAS, we're talking, often I assume, we're thinking about a student's experience from grade three to grade four to grade five to grade six. But we have students who are entering at all those different levels, and each of those things has a different iteration for So when we look at math, again, very high-performing. It doesn't surprise me at all to see those results reflected in some of the reporting that Mr. Bizzitlow and Ms. Nguyen presented, because it's pretty similar in terms of what we're finding from the state testing results. And again, this is the math SGP, so we're looking to be in that green band. You can see particularly at grade eight and at the high school, we're at the top of the band for most of our students. And this is our high needs subgroup. And this is that comparison, again, between the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations in high needs versus most of our students. And there's that quadrant that we want to be in, and we're mostly there. We're not quite as, as high growth, I mean, high achievement in terms of math for some schools, and that bears more conversation. But I think overall, you know, we're in the right place in, in the, in the graph. So what do we do with all this information? I think this is a good point. One of the things that we really, we look at is how the test is feedback about our students, and most importantly, kind of what, how does it compare with what we know about their achievements in, as measured by our district assessments and our day-to-day teaching and learning? But the other part is, what does it tell us about our curriculum? So, you know, if we invested a lot of time in the Shrewsbury Writing Project, how well is that playing out on the essay scores in terms of the state test? And so we look at, you know, the analysis of the different items on the test for information about where we're very well-aligned and where we're not. This is a really good example, I think, of, and in your test booklets, I kind of circled one of those spots. You're looking to see kind of how we perform in terms of the state on different items. And then we might have really good reasons for, okay, so this is, comes at a different time in our curriculum, or kids have taken the test before they've really had that content, and we understand the difference. Or as in writing, you might want to say, okay, so these are the essay results. You know, how are we doing on conventions? Are we spending enough time on, on that as a part of, as a subskill? How are we doing on idea development? Are we seeing kind of dividends in terms of our investment in, in writing? And one of the questions that, you know, coaches have asked themselves is, is the writing preparation that students are having at the elementary level translating in terms of writing in response to reading? Do we have to have more emphasis on that kind of thing? And again, it raises the question of, you know, do you want to teach test prep separately, or do you want to assume that students who are strong writers are going to do well on the test? And as we're experiencing this new iteration of the test, we're kind of trying to suss that out. Item analysis is a really good way for us to see how some of our teaching and learning translates in practice in terms of applying on the test. So our next steps are really kind of using the data to identify what are the skills and needs our students have, you know, to calibrate our district assessments, and to explain to parents kind of what this tells us in terms of all the other assessments that kids have. To look at, you know, opportunities to collaborate across levels, because there are differences in student performances. And if the tests are really calibrated to be more equitable in terms of the rigor, there are new opportunities that there weren't before. And then to really think about what are expectations for instruction, and how well is our, our student performance matching what we'd expect to see? How do we use data to help teachers get better at their craft? So I know it's been a long night. You've seen a lot of graphs today. But I'm wondering if you have questions for me, or things that you want me to learn more about?
Colleagues, Mrs. Gonzano.
So the science and technology test, can you go through that again in terms, it was the legacy last year? It's moving to the 2.0 this year.
Yes. So it will have an ability to do some things that are a little different in terms of what it's asking students to do, and finding evidence, and also using technology tools to kind of drag and drop some items. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, how the format compares. Something similar, I think, is being expected as we adopt new social studies standards, like how will the social studies test change, and will there be an assessment? And if so, kind of where will the focus be? So we've seen this kind of wave of changes with the adjustments to standards. We've seen the math practices come with the math curriculum. And math in focus, I think, really helped prepare kids well for some of the problem-solving that is now... that is now showing up on the assessment. As we adopt the science curriculum with everyone next year, we're focusing very similarly on the practices. And then we'll be looking to see, are those practices reflected in some of the approach to the assessment? And, you know, what's hard when something's new, just as hard when something's new in a marriage, is knowing what to expect and having to adjust on the other end. And wondering how seriously to take some of those differences.
Right. Well, that's a very good way of explaining it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. McGee.
Getting at the science thing again, it seems that the middle school performance is out of sync with overall MCAS performance in English and in math or even science in high school. And that that seems to be a consistent sore spot year after year. Is there a curriculum explanation for this or what do you think is behind our different performance?
I think it's hard to tell. I mean, there's a part of me that hearkens back to the Beal report around what's the best grade configuration and I think that's the grade spin where we have the most transitions. So we know about kids as they transition that that's impactful. I think certainly there could be a curriculum explanation. We're purposefully working with the middle school on the science initiative to make sure that there's an alignment as we did with math, to make sure that math in focus in grade five had a tight alignment. So the hope is certainly to kind of examine some of those questions in concert with the curriculum coaches and the coordinators and make sure that there are similar expectations. But I think, you know, I have heard too that that transition isn't as smooth as it could be and I'm, you know, anticipating working through some of those questions with Dr. Lizotte and Dr. Jones. They're interested, too. One of the ways we're hoping to get at that is by looking at shrinking the change in the scope of the problem, for example, to look at a new literacy tool for measuring student progress. So we've been using the DRA for about 17 years and teachers find that it's helpful but labor intensive and not as helpful as we've adjusted expectations for what students should know and be able to do as readers. So one opportunity to kind of do better by that is to look at what's an assessment tool that we can use at elementary and middle? Is there a tool that can span those grades and help us have conversations about student progress? And if we build that, then how can we learn from that? Another piece that's important, I think, is just looking at the use of data and what those routines are and having consistent plans for helping students transition and sharing information across grade levels. And I think we're, you know, in a good place to look at that and see how smooth it is.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
This is Fritz.
First, I want to thank you. I think you are so skilled at taking a ton of information and distilling it into very easily understandable pieces for us, especially for myself. So thank you. Every time you give a presentation, I think that. So I want to say it publicly.
Thank you.
From a data, you know, looking at data analysis and, I mean, data is data. How do we use that information? And particularly, I look at students who are in that warning category. How does that translate into individual instruction for those students? We have information. It is only one piece. It doesn't really equal everything that they do as students. Standardized testing might not be easy for some. So how do we look at that as a district?
Well, the state wisdom is to encourage us to look at the bottom 25% of each school. In the theory that everybody has a bottom 25%, and that's a way of kind of developing some new processes to track students and at the same time, look at equity. Because if you're, everybody has a bottom 25% and everybody can work on improving the scores for those kids. I think the other answer is really unpacking, who is it that's failing? What's the profile of that student? And where do we have bright spots? So one answer for that is to look at the performance of subgroups across schools. Todd alluded to a conversation we were having earlier today about the differences between males and female scores. And, you know, the feeling like it must be starting before they get to us because why don't we have more boys in some of the honors or AP offerings at the high school? Where's the origin of that? And we do see some variation at grade three in terms of males and females and ELA scores, but we don't see that at grade four. So unpacking a little bit of, okay, why is that and how consistent is that? And who is really good at closing those gaps? Because if you look across the elementary schools, in some, there's no gap at all. And I wonder if that's just been the trend for the past two years or if that's something that that school's doing really well that we need to replicate. If I look at the subgroup scores for floral, those, the percentage of students kind of achieving, exceeding our benchmarks are pretty promising. Like I want to talk to Lisa McQuirby and ask her, you know, what are you investing in as a school for some of those subgroups? But again, you know, you can go down the rabbit hole with some of the information and I've definitely kind of gone down the rabbit hole. But I want to also remind myself, it's just a small sample of data. So I don't want to overinflate any one piece because we really had a baseline in one year.
Great.
Thank you. And we have a lot of information in-house that we have more reliability for, I think.
For the questions and comments, colleagues. Two questions from me. A great presentation. The first has less to do with our results and more to do with the test-taking process with regard to MCAS for students with a language barrier. If a student comes into the district and is an English language learner, they're recent to the district, their English language learning has recently begun. They've entered in a year where there's MCAS testing administered. Are any accommodations made for that student or are they simply held to the standard as if they were English proficient?
If they're a beginner and they absolutely don't have any English, they're exempt for a year.
Okay.
If they're not a beginner as measured by the access test, then they could take it with various accommodations.
Access test, I'm sorry, is that?
The ELE test, the test that determines whether students at level one, total beginner, no English to a level five or six where you're starting to see some transfer of skills.
Okay, so it's only those students who have basically no grounding yet and are not ready to be speaking English in a public setting that have a break?
Are totally exempt.
And everyone else is in.
Yeah. So I think, again, the perspective of the state is we really want high expectations for everybody. And historically, when we exempted students from that testing, then we stopped paying attention to how those students were performing over time. So their worry is if you exempt the students for longer than that amount of time, they don't make as much growth as other students.
And certainly, I guess, what I want to highlight is, obviously, we don't want to exempt any students from our performance standards, but I just want to highlight, there's no accommodation made. So for example, the test is not offered in another language. There's no additional assistance provided to these students.
They're provided with a dictionary in their home language. There's a tool that they can use to translate. But that's, I mean, I don't know about you, but if I went to another country for a year and gave me a dictionary, you know, and took something sophisticated as a high school MCAS test. We have some kids who are doing some pretty amazing amounts of learning during the time that they're short-term at their levels.
They're given longer time, but not longer than a day.
Okay.
So some of the accommodations are not sufficient to really.
Address the gap.
Address the gap, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. My other question was just level designations for districts based on MCAS performance. I know that those had been put on hold a few years back when they were transitioning the way the test was administered. Is that still on hold? Is that back to being determined? Because I noticed we still have level determinations on like Desi's website, but they don't seem to be based.
Initially, we were no level and now we are not requiring assistant. The exact language is in your report. I don't honestly recall off the top of my head, but that's a question I'd say to Dr. Sawyer. Have you heard something lately? I mean, one of the things that's happened in between is we have a new commissioner with a different perspective around some of the things that the DESC was moving towards around equity. So I imagine there's some conversation about that because I think, you know, there's two dynamics about testing that are important. You know, the adage is what gets tested is what gets taught. And we want to be cautious about not losing some of the really rich learning experiences that may not be measured on an assessment. The other piece is that if the stakes are too high for testing, then teachers start doing things that are not great for students. And not necessarily in Massachusetts and it's not certainly a worry I have in Shrewsbury, but I think that research guides kind of state policy around testing. And Massachusetts is really planfully not tied merit-based, you know, pay or, you know, dinging teachers or dinging districts for that reason. And I think, you know, this commissioner is much more thinking about how you use them as indicators to pull the spirit of ed reform without tying districts to really laborious processes or holding them accountable for things that are not helpful in the overall scheme. And I don't know how that will transfer to levels, but I know right now our category is not requiring assistance.
Not requiring assistance or intervention, which is inspiring bureaucratic phrase. That tells us how we're doing. But it is a rollout and of a new, because under the shift in the federal law, which was a healthy shift back, I think, away from some of the more odious parts of the no child left behind error. The, it looks at essentially achievement and growth, which Amy described in her report in different ways. It looks at high school completion, whether that's your cohort graduation rate, dropout percentage, that kind of thing. It does look at progress towards attaining English language proficiency for those students who come in not speaking English. And then it looks at a couple of other indicators which include, do you have students with chronic absenteeism? Because I know that's a bellwether for a signifier of how well students will do as well as advanced coursework completion, which ties back to earlier conversation, whereas if you're, if a district is looking at trying to raise its level with the state, the more advanced courses you offer, the more you qualify for points in that category. It's not a perfect system by any means, you know, but I think it is different in that it's gotten away from parsing, trying to parse five different levels of performance. And depending on different student populations, it probably wasn't particularly fair in some cases. And really, the intent, which still is required under the federal law, is to identify a certain percentage of underperforming schools in your state and making sure that those districts have some sort of intervention or assistance. So I think in a very general sense, the Department of Elementary and Second Education is leaving us alone because none of our indicators are not showing that we require that kind of assistance from the state. And I think, I was talking with Dr. McGee about this earlier today and I know he's used the analogy and Ms. Clodder led off with this in her presentation. Some of these pieces are kind of like vital signs in the sense that if you're at or above, you don't really think about it too much, you're not too worried. If you're coming in below it, especially trending below it, it's a red flag that something might be wrong and you should be looking more carefully at what that shows. But it's, thankfully, I think the accountability piece at the state level, they've eased off the gas a little bit and I think that's been a healthy thing overall for the Commonwealth.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dr. Sawyer, anything else you wanted to add?
I just want to thank Ms. Clodder for the excellent job on the written materials you received as well as the report this evening. And to thank her and also all the other folks in the field who I think are using the data appropriately, delving into what is this telling us about our curriculum? How are we aligning with different standards? Where are we putting emphasis? Where are we not? And then also, and to Ms. Fritz's question earlier, how are we identifying students who are in need? And I think the work that we're undertaking, the beginning stages of, that we've been charged with through the strategic plan that Ms. Clodder's working very hard on is identifying, you know, what are some ways we can look at data? What kind of dashboard can we create? How do we have some of these early warning system type approaches where we can catch students early and hopefully provide the right kinds of interventions? So that students who require and whether they belong to a certain subgroup or not, whether that's reading at an early age or whether that's, you know, plateauing or trending in the wrong direction in terms of math achievement. We want to see that continuous, steady growth and achievement over time. And I think that, you know, used correctly, there's a lot of good tools here to help us with that work. But by no means is it the only tool and by no means should we overemphasize what the results of one day of testing. And, you know, and parsing these things can become complex as well in the sense that when it comes right down to it, some of the differences in growth percentiles or achievement, you're talking about a student maybe one or two answers on an entire test. They're going to change the difference between what a grade looked like last year versus this year. So in trying to really determine what is, you know, in a general sense, significant, that's something we have to keep our eye on as well. But again, I appreciate Ms. Clodder's report and thank you for your attention and your questions.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is under Finance and Operations. It is a fiscal year 2020 budget calendar and fiscal priorities guidelines vote. The school committee at our meeting on October 10th, or at our meeting on October 10th, Mr. Collins presented an initial budget calendar for the development of the fiscal 2020 budget. At our meeting on October 2014, we also received a draft of the fiscal priorities and guidelines. Dr. McGee and I, of course, are on the fiscal priorities subcommittee and had reviewed that document in advance. Both of those documents are enclosed. This is a second viewing or discussion of each of these. Mr. Collins, did you have anything you wanted to add tonight?
I would just add that there's no, of course, changes on any of these documents from your last meeting. Certainly ask that you vote to approve them so we can move forward in the budget process. And then also additionally, as an information point, the town manager and board of selectmen agreed upon fiscal 20 guidance for the townwide budget. And I'd be happy to pass that along or forward that along if the school committee members haven't yet seen that.
We would appreciate that. Thank you.
So that will be another good kind of contextual information as we approach fiscal 20.
Thank you. I have not received any feedback from the community on any of these documents. Dr. Sawyer, anything you wanted to add before we proceed to a discussion and vote?
No, I also support and ask that you vote to approve.
Great. Colleagues, questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that the committee vote to approve the fiscal year 2020 budget calendar.
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll entertain a motion that the committee vote to approve the priorities and guidelines for the fiscal 2020 budget development process.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda, and my iPad couldn't handle all the information in our testing reports tonight, so I'm onto the paper copy. No, it's okay. It's actually, didn't even get through the high school report, so it wasn't even you. Finance and Operations, substitute pay rate adjustment. By way of background, in our current climate, the district has experienced some challenges in procuring substitute teachers that is related to the rate at which we pay as compared to neighboring districts. I'll turn it over to Ms. Malone, our Director of Human Resources, to provide some additional background to the committee. Ms. Malone?
Sure. So, thank you. We have 110 day-to-day substitute teachers. That number fluctuates because it is a pool from which we draw for both our long-term substitute teachers and for paraprofessional staff. So it's an ongoing process to keep that number constant. They come in and fill if a teacher is attending much-needed professional development, pre-approved personal day for medical, legal, or family business or illness. Our rates of absenteeism are actually quite reasonable. And, but at the same time, we have noticed already at the beginning this year, some concerns with being able to fill the substitutes as much as we would like to. And so even though our fill rates at the elementary level are at 92% and at Sherwood and Oak between 80 and 83%, we have had, we've been short at least one staff member every day of the school year from August 28th to October, through October 12th at Sherwood and a little bit less than that at Oak. We don't have the high school numbers at this time. It works a little differently at the high school. But we really, at this point, feel it's important. And Mr. Collins and I talked about this and we looked at neighboring rates and our pool are holding out for a couple of our neighboring towns which either pay $85 or $95 per day. So we're making a recommendation that this year, we raise the daily subrate from $75 to $85 a day. And then next year, with the new budget year, raise it again to $90 a day. And that will allow us to be competitive and continue to keep this important pipeline going as well as covering our day-to-day needs. So it's really, it's both a two-step increase and a twofold need. One is as a pipeline, one is just to fill what we have to, you know, each day in the schools. We do incur other directed, indirect costs when we can't fill an absence with a substitute. And we'll either wind up paying a differential to a paraprofessional to cover it and then the school goes without the support services of the paraprofessional. Or we're just trying to patch together the personnel that are in the school, so it's not the best educational experience. So before that gets out of hand this year, Mr. Collins and I are both recommending an increase. an increase.
Mr. Collins or Dr. Sawyer, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I would just add that included in Ms. Malone's report is the estimated cost for the remainder of the fiscal year. It's estimated at an additional thirty-two thousand dollars. And that's just based upon the percentage increase and and how much we had budgeted for this year, of course. You know, what we're actually going to spend can vary year to year based upon rates of illnesses primarily. And, you know, if we have a bad flu year and we have a spike, we're going to be higher. If we don't have that, then we're going to be lower. But I I think it's certainly affordable to implement this fiscal year, given early indications of our placement rates for students in out-of-district placements for both special education and vocational placements who are less than budgeted. And I'll have a more complete report for the school committee in December on a current year budget update. But I feel comfortable recommending to the committee that we move forward with this on the financial aspect as well as the educational reasons and and operational reasons that Ms. Malone conveyed.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions or comments?
It's amazing to me we can get people to work for these amounts of money. I looked at it on a per hourly basis. We're, we're approaching under, under fifteen dollars an hour. So the fact that we're able to get people to come is, is, we're really fortunate that way. I certainly support this increase.
This is Consano.
I also think it's important to keep that pool of people, the hundred and ten or so. From my own experience, I've subbed in some of these districts and and what happens when you're in the classroom filling in for teachers, especially in the wintertime, is you're doing it because there's illness. And so, you know, that subpool also gets impacted, infected. And so you definitely do want a healthy, healthy pool. So, no pun intended. So in terms of keeping the, the number of people who want to to work. And and again, from anecdotal evidence from the different districts I've subbed in, that's one of the reasons why they were in those districts is because of the pay. Now, I, you know, I cannot work in Shrewsbury because I'm on the school committee, so I didn't choose not to sub here because of the, that's right. But those other districts definitely will, they have more draw. So I think this makes us competitive, so I support it as well.
And you don't even need to recuse yourself from the vote because you can't benefit from it.
That's right. There you go.
Colleagues, anything further? In that case, I will entertain a motion that the committee vote to approve an increase in the day-to-day substitute teacher rate from seventy-five dollars per day to eighty-five dollars per day for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year and again from eighty-five dollars per day to ninety dollars per day for the 2019-2020 school year. So moved. Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item is under New Business. It is an Aspet Valley Collaborative Update Report. State law governing educational collaboratives requires four updates each year to member school districts. This is our first update for the current school year. The report is enclosed with our meeting materials. Dr. Sawyer, did you have any additional comments on this?
Just to point out again, there's a wealth of material and information that Dr. Kathy Cummins, who's the executive director of the collaborative, who continues to do excellent work. I recently completed my term as the Chair of the Aspet Valley Board and as a result, I was responsible for evaluating or coordinating the evaluation of Dr. Cummins, which was outstanding. The collaborative continues to be very healthy, both financially as well as the, what the quality of the services it's providing. As a participating district, we benefit in a variety of ways from that, everything from group purchasing to being able to have access to programs that would be very difficult for us to fund on our own, but by pooling resources. And that's really the major point of the collaborative, how we're able to have some of those specialized programs, job-alike groups right around working together with other like positions in neighboring districts. Of course, we have some very high-quality districts that we're able to learn from and contribute to. And you can see there's a lot of ambitious goals and work that's happened. And then just of interest is that, once the state approved it, it's always a good sign of health when you have districts wanting to join your collaborative and Auburn was added as another district. And I know that Dr. Marilyn Brunel, the superintendent there, has been very pleased with the opportunities their district's receiving as a, as a result of joining. So the the collaborative remains healthy. We'll look forward to continuing to report similar news as the year goes on and I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Colleagues, questions or comments? I think we're all set there. No action is needed on the part of the committee. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. We do have three sets of minutes before us tonight. They're from our regular meeting of Wednesday, October 24th. There are also two sets of workshop minutes. One is from Wednesday, October 17th, and another from Thursday, October 18th. We do have a correction that was made to the minutes from Thursday, October 18th that Mrs. Fritz submitted this afternoon and we were provided an updated version of those via email today. Did anyone else have any further questions, comments, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we accept the minutes for October 24th, October 17th, and October 18th, the October 18th minutes as amended. So moved. Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of collective bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Association and for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. I will entertain a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Association, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. So moved. Second. Motion has been made and seconded. This motion requiring a roll call vote. Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Consano?
Aye.
Mr. Pallach?
Aye.
Thank you.[1724.88]